Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Fire?
Here.
Peshaw?
Here.
Rosendich?
Here.
Argander?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Whitso?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Sparrows?
Here.
Butky?
Here.
Henler?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands from a nation, I mean not invisible, but which is strong.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. On recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council for stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Please go to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hotston, and my address is 10-884 Cameron Lane in Marshfield. I'm here on, I want answers of why they did what they did to those cemetery, to the cemetery. Why did they take away and take down my dad's shepherd's hook that's been up there for eighteen years? Why did they take away my grandson's shepherd hook that's been up there for how many years? How can I now put any, any kind of decorations up there when I can't even get a shepherd's hook in the ground now? Years ago, for over eighteen years, everybody would pick up all their flowers and their clippings and all their other stuff, but we were still allowed to keep that shepherd's hook in there to put up any other type of decorations. What right did they give those, what right did they have to take a statue off the top of a grave and break it? What right did they have to go and take flowers out of vases on a grave? And what right did they have to throw them in a heap of garbage for you to go through and pick and try and find your loved ones' items? There was broken lanterns. There was chimes. There was American flags laying on the ground that they just threw. There was a lady out there just picking those up so she could distribute, take care of them the way they should have been done. It was heart wrenching to go there and to see your loved ones' items thrown in a heap of pile, a heap. It was terrible. Granted, you have rules, but what was this stuff hurting? What was it hurting? If you cannot snowplow and see a shepherd's hook, then I suggest you find someone who can see. If you can't go and take a weed whipper and not hit those, or if you're hitting them when you're weed whipping, then you have to have someone who could see that, because there's no way you cannot see those, no way. And also, another thing is, there is a gravesite up there that's for stillborn babies, that every year or maybe twice a year, we have a memorial walk up there for the loved ones. They took every single one of those little tiny items that people took up there to remember their little loved one where they couldn't afford a regular gravesite, and they threw them in the garbage. They threw them in the garbage. Now, you're not going to tell me that's not disrespectful. Something needs to be done, and someone needs to pay for the damage that they did to some of these graves. Plaques that cost money. I know a person who their, their grand, their uncle made a special cross for grandma's grave. Where is it? It's gone. God knows where it is. I want answers. And I don't think I'm the only one. I mean, I don't think any of you would want to go up there and see your parents' items thrown in a heap of pile, and you're digging through trying to find what was yours, especially baby stuff? Is that right? There's, it went the wrong way. They should have went about this all different. And Mr. Kepris, or whatever his name was, his comment was, how do you get a hold of these people? We don't have the time, or make time, make time. But you have to, someone has to do something about this. Who's going to replace all the damaged stuff? You've got another couple hundred dollars for me to replace my items? No. I don't know. I, I, I just would like answers, and I would like them sooner than later before it gets overturned. And are we allowed to put up Christmas decorations now or fall, fall? How can we? Can't get a, shepherd's hook in the ground. So how do you expect us to decorate them? That's all I got to say.
Ma'am, we, we hear you. And if you would, Steve, if you can get her name and phone number? Anyone else from the public, please, please state your name and address.
My name is Tiffany Swisland. My address is 115909 County Road, Seaton, Stratford. I am also speaking about the cemetery. About ten and a half years ago, I lost my son. And every year, we have certain times of the year that we honor him in special ways, one being fall, Christmas, birthday, such thing, the day of his death. And to find out that his birthday presents that we had put up by him were gone and laying in a pile full of other loved ones' belongings, to search through that was the most heart wrenching thing I have ever done besides losing my son. We always put fall garland up on a shepherd's hook that has been up there. Two months after he passed away, we put a shepherd's hook up there. It has been up there for ten and a half years. We decorate for fall, we decorate for Christmas, and now I feel like I can't even celebrate those special moments with him because I have nothing to put up there. I am not, as far as I know, I'm not allowed to put the snowman up there that we have put up there for the last eight years for winter. Not only is it my son's grave, but I know everybody else has loved ones that were up there, whether it happened to them or not. But I guess my feeling is, how would they feel if I went onto their property and took something out of their yard because the snow was coming or the grass was going to green up? That's my child's home for the rest of his life. That's his house. That's not their home. I would never go to somebody's yard or home to do anything like that. They disturbed his house. They disturbed his resting place. And I understand October 1st, all things need to be gone off of the gravesites, and we have followed that besides our shepherd's hook. Mike Baltus always allowed us to have it up there. I don't know what it's hurting. I get that there's snow plowing issues, but it's a shepherd's hook that stands six feet out of the ground. And now I cannot use that to decorate and celebrate special holidays throughout the winter with my son. And I understand rules will be rules, but to go the way they did and then to go up there and find out that a quarter of the cemetery still has items up there because they were decorated for fall, what about my son's birthday present that, to me, was more special to have up there than it was to be decorated at October 15th for fall? It's not their choice on what is up there and what's not. It's our choice, and it's our loved ones'. And I would just like to see something be done about the way that issue was handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, can you get her name and number as well?
Also, I'll give you, you're very, very respectful, actually with you and also finding your partner next.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing, seeing no one, then we will go to item D. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the October 13, 2020, meeting and October 19, 2020 budget meeting? A motion by Mr. Peshaw, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Peshaw?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Argander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler?
Thank you. Item E, staff updates. Aquatic Center project, Justin Casperson.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Steve, I think you handed out some pictures of the updated pool project to the council, correct? With the colder temperature, concrete pouring has slowed down, but as you can see from the pictures, both pool vessels are prepped and ready for concrete rebar. We'll be starting this week. The underground drains for the both pools and the building have been installed. Currently, our masons are working on the west side of the building, and then we're moving to the east side. Doine has installed all the storm sewer on the east side of the facility, on the project. PGA, which is our rough, our plumber, has been installing all the plumbing rough ins in the building. And Total Electric, our electrician company, has been doing the rough bins for the electrical work. Like I said earlier, the colder temperatures have slowed down things. It's supposed to warm up this week and into next week, so concrete should be formed up, but the things are moving along quite well. I'll entertain any questions if there are any, and I do extend an offer for anyone who wants to do a tour of the facility at any time.
Any questions? Seeing none. All right. Thank you, Justin. Item F, Mayor's comments, employee recognition. Tom Turchi, city engineer, October 30, 1995, 25 years. Jean Coy, wastewater department, November 3, 2005, 15 years. And Jennifer Requ, human resources, November 9, 2015, five years. Thank you all very much. Just would, two quick things. I was, Deb's not here. She's probably around here somewhere, but I just really wanted to congratulate her and her staff for how they've handled all of these elections and everything going on. And she's assured us that the election, we're doing in-person voting in, in, in the council chambers during the week, and that all the polling places will be safe and everything else. But all of, Deb Hall and her entire staff, thank you very much. And that does bring me to the last thing of mind. We saw today a record day for viruses, over 5,000. And so it is here. It's here in central Wisconsin. And so we're just going to ask everybody to be very, very careful. Wear your masks when you're out in public. If you're sick, stay home. Wash your hands. Keep your kids home. We're going into a cold time of year, and we've got to beat this. But today's record-setting day was a real eye-opener. There'll be more to come on that as we go. That's all for me. Item G, council comments. Any comments from the council? Mr. Butky?
This is going to be very difficult for me, especially after hearing the ladies with the issues that they had. But Marshfield lost a great human being and leader in Graham Olson. Graham was born in 1944, passed away last Friday at the age of 76. He was a teacher here in the Marshfield Public Schools for 36 years until 2002. He served as the high school varsity baseball coach for 16 years and the student council advisor for 21. He was a regular at high school football games and basketball games, volunteering to supervise the events to help sure the games went fine and smoothly and the players and students were well behaved. He had a knack for sensing when fans or students were about to cause some mischief. By placing himself near the troublemakers. That's how he handled it. During the summer, when he wasn't teaching, he could be found at the Marshfield baseball field, always an advocate for kids. He started the Marshfield Little League program in 1970, and he was on that until 1995. During that time, he helped raise to build the baseball diamonds for Little League use and created league programs, enabling hundreds of kids to play youth baseball during the summer. He had a love for baseball and working with kids. When asked about the program, he would always say the Little League programs were designed to help, help keep kids off the screen. One thing that he made sure of, and it wasn't always the case before that, everybody played, no matter what the score was. It was participation for kids that, you know, we haven't had many major league ballplayers in Marshfield, two that I can remember just recently, but he was always looking out for kids so that they could have fun and, and do something good. He was involved with fundraising for the Little League, and that was at the American Legion Pancake Breakfast in Raffles. In the classroom, his teaching style and personality were like no other, knowing, known for his challenging curriculum, research papers, and book reviews. His Western Civilization class was a college preparation course. It was tough, but he was fair. He took great pride in his students. He loved staying connected with students. Many students came back to him after they graduated just to talk to him either at his house or when he was teaching yet. He was an avid reader. He was elected to the school board for three consecutive terms. That was his passion to stay connected and do what's right for kids. He was on there for nine years. He was on the American Legion Baseball Board of Directors for 30 years, volunteered at baseball game. And I know Mike and others helped with the baseball finance. He was a fundraiser, but Mr. Olson organized that. Mr. Olson spent much of his free time volunteering at the House of the Dove Hospice Center. He's been doing, he was doing that for years. He was dedicated to improving the students, one student at a time. His family would often joke that it was nearly impossible to go in Marshfield with Graham and not to run into somebody he knew. And he loved that about Marshfield. He was a loving husband, dedicated father, survived by his wife, Georgiana, his sister, Karen, sons Tony and Andy, and their spouses, Amy and Renee, had two grandchildren, Madison and Cooper, and I heard about them many times. He was so proud of them. He's also survived by all the Little Leaguers he coached and all the students he taught over the years. Graham enjoyed nothing more than working with kids. Every student who stepped into his classroom, every ballplayer that walked onto a Little League field put a twinkle in his eye, and I saw that firsthand. Olson family extends thanks to the former students, Little Leaguers, teachers, members of the community with whom he worked. Teaching, coaching, and working within the community brought more joy that the family can express. Olson, the Olson family will be hosting a celebration of Graham's life at the American Legion Post 54, located on 2100 South Maple, Marshfield, October 30 from 3 to 6 p.m. Masks will be required for all those that wish to attend. He coached me in baseball in high school. We built a scoreboard for Little League field. Ollie and I painted it, and lo and behold, somebody burned it down one time, but we had, we had that. But then the proudest thing I was able to do is I coached his two sons then, in, in Little League, Tony and Andy. And I say, rest in peace, my former teacher, former coach and friend. Thank you.
Anything, any other council comments? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received, I think, two phone calls concerning the topic that the two ladies brought up earlier tonight. And I was, I called the Park and Rec Department to find out if any of the things that were taken from the gravesite could be recovered. And I was able to tell the lady where she might find it, but she would have to go dig through the snow to get it. I saw Mr. Casperson's email to us explaining the circumstances. I saw Mr. Casperson on television. I've got to say, that's probably the most tone deaf performance by any public servant I've ever heard in my life. I don't know how the rules got changed or why the rules got changed, but I can tell you that the people who had put monuments up for over 25 years, in one case, one, in one case, I don't know if it was 25 years. Now, the lady here says about 15 or so, but they, Casperson said that the notices in the paper said everything had to be removed, but they assumed, but the people assumed, and I think rightly so, that they could do things. But they assume, but the people assumed, and I think rightly so, that they could do things the way they had done them in the past. And they had no idea things like the Shepherd's Hook would be taken out. I think there needs to be some consequence for this, honest to God consequence. And I will rely on the city administrator's judgment to do that. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Mr. Peshal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to remind the citizens of Marshfield that there's an election coming up next week. Uh, I came in and voted yesterday right here. It took 10 minutes. If you haven't mailed in your mail-in ballot, mail it tomorrow or come in here tomorrow in person or show up on election day. Thank you.
Mrs. Sparrows?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to follow up on the trick-or-treating. As many of you know, um, we as a council ha- have decided to have trick-or-treating in the city of Marshfield. Um, and we thought that that was important to, to leave that up to people to make their own decisions. And then we had a subsequent follow-up about Fifth Street. Um, and, um, I know that there's a lot of communities surrounding Marshfield that have canceled their trick-or-treat. And, um, my understanding is that Fifth Street has always been a huge draw for trick-or-treaters. But what I have noticed is I drive up and down Fifth Street, um, quite frequently to go to work. Um, and in fact, I was on Fifth Street at 3 o'clock this morning, driving home from work. Um, and I, I do want to let people, um, from other communities realize that it, it appears this year that Fifth Street does not look like it's going to be as in years past. Um, so for, you know, anybody outside of this community who may have been traveling to Marshfield simply for Fifth Street, um, you, you know, you may want to reconsider that. Um, the numbers for COVID are very high and we do need to be very cautious. And, um, I just think it's really important that if you plan to make a trip here because you thought you were going to see the same thing on Fifth Street as, as normal years, I, I think you'll be disappointed. I don't think there's going to be quite as many people there. They've made that decision, um, you know, for that, that was their decision to make and they're, they're doing it for their own, their own safety and for the safety of their community, I'm sure. But I just wanted to let people know that it, it doesn't look like that's going to be the same as usual. So, um, you know, if that was your only reason to come to Marshfield for trick-or-treat, you may just want to reconsider that.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Uh, seeing none, um, about item H, reports from commissions, boards and committees? No, with that then, um, is there a motion to receive and place and file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Handler, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, please roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Faisal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargender?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows? Budkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K, second reading of ordinance number 1442, request to rezone properties at 3400 Fry Court, parcel 250-2602-264-1019 and parcel 250-2602-264-2028 from SR4, single-family residential to MR12 multifamily residential presented by Bryce Hembrik City Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so as the mayor just said, uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone from a single-family residential use to a multifamily residential use. Uh, this property is located in the northwest, uh, part of the city. Um, the applicant intends to look to sell the property to a developer who is, um, interested in potentially building some multifamily residential units. Um, any multifamily development with multiple buildings or nine or more units, uh, will require a conditional use permit. So there would be another review by plan commission. Um, and then the common council would have that final approval. Um, overall, this property is likely better suited for multifamily residential development than, uh, single-family residential or commercial development due to its location and the lack of access to Veterans Parkway. I provided some more information in the, in the packet. Uh, plan commission reviewed this request and recommended approval. This is the second reading and thus the recommended action is to approve ordinance 1442. Thank you.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1442? Motion by Mr. Rosendich, second by Mr. Peshal. Any discussion? Mr. Wagner, or I'm sorry, Mr. Peshal?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this item and the next item are both in my district of the city, and I have not received any negative comments on either one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Faisal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargender?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yep.
Budkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L, second reading of ordinance number 1443, request to rezone uh, the south portion of property, west of Fry Avenue and Fry Court and north of West Veterans Parkway, parcel 250-2602-264-1027 from RH 35 Rural Holding to MR12 multifamily residential, uh, presented by Bryce Hembrik City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the applicant is, uh, looking to rezone to MR12 to allow for multifamily residential, uh, just like the, um, the rezoning that we just discussed. Uh, the applicant is also looking to sell the property to a developer, uh, who's building these multifamily residential units. The plan is to combine the subject property with the, uh, property to the south. Um, once again, uh, it will likely require to go to, um, the plan commission for a group development for any of the future, uh, multifamily development that would be, um, on that site. Uh, plan commission reviewed this request and recommended approval. Uh, since the first reading, the developer has actually, uh, completed the certified survey map and it is recorded with the county. Uh, so the lot is split. Um, Alder Person Whitzel had brought up, uh, that, uh, the property wasn't, um, split at the moment. So that is now taken care of. Uh, so with that, this is the second reading and thus the recommended action is to approve ordinance 1443.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1443? Motion by Mr. Wagner, uh, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Mr. Whitzel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for, uh, bringing that information in, uh, Bryce. I was going to ask again because I couldn't remember if I'd asked the first time. Uh, that, uh, splitting of that parcel does not require any action from us?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Faisal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargender?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Budkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M, first reading of ordinance number 1444, request to update the Marshfield Municipal Airport Five-Year Campus Master Plan, presented by Bryce Hembrik City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the airport is looking to update their five-year campus master plan. Uh, and the change mainly consists of just updating some data and some maps. Um, the airport's first campus master plan was approved in 2013 and then was updated in 2015. Uh, one of the requirements in our zoning code is to, um, update each campus master plan after five years. Uh, that's why they are here tonight. Um, this plan includes an inventory of existing facilities that are onsite and then, uh, discusses, you know, potential future projects that may take place in the next five years. Um, other than some potential, um, air, airplane hangars, there are no, uh, specific plans for any new development within the next five years. Um, the biggest change would actually be the removal of the office complex, uh, terminal building, which used to hold the, um, MAPS, uh, Marshfield Area Pet Shelter. Uh, that is, um, planned to, the demolition is ta- uh, planned to take place in 2021. And the pavement will be reutilized by the street department is, uh, what I received from Jeff Guyer, the airport manager. Uh, this plan has been reviewed by both, or sorry, the airport committee, uh, the DRT, the Development Review Team and the Plan Commission. This is the first reading and, uh, the second reading is scheduled for the November 10th meeting, but I can try to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Any questions for Bryce? Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Bryce, uh, I, I don't know that you were probably made aware of it, but, uh, there is a, um, a runway repair project going on out there right now that's being funded 95% by the state. Um, we also received funding for a, a new five-year master plan. And, uh, the consultant's been hired on that. I, I suspect within a year or maybe two, we'll be seeing, um, a revision to this because they, well, they just hired the consultants last week. So, uh, we'll be, it'll be something, uh, this, it'll add on to what you're having here.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? From the council? Uh, seeing none? All right. Thank you, Bryce. Item N, first reading of ordinance number 1445, establishing an ethics board for the city of Marshfield, presented by, uh, Ed Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, this, this project has, this isn't something that's being done on a whim. This was being done over a period of about six months, maybe seven months now. And I have to thank, um, uh, Hap, uh, for his wise counsel on this. And, uh, also Steve and, uh, Jen, and, uh, also a really special thanks to, uh, uh, Jennifer Gerstley. Uh, Jennifer, uh, has much experience in the HR field. I think 15 years of dealing with subjects like this. And she was and remains invaluable to the, to, uh, the, the process of putting this thing together. But the, the reason we started out on this thing was in the 14 years or so that I've been involved with this common council, there have been two or three incidents where there were, there were things going on that, that we didn't like. We didn't, that we thought were, were probably a conflict of interest or a, an ethics violation of some sort or another. And we basically had no place to go with it except law enforcement. And basically that, that, that never turned out well. That never turned out well at all. And the, the other thing that upset us a lot was that, you know, when i- in the past six months, this common council has been rocked by a lot of, um, I guess you'd call them scandals for lack of a better term. Uh, charges being filed, the charges filed, being filed against, um, the police chief and others and going back and forth. And, uh, a lot of these things could have been probably handled instead of through multiple lawyers, probably handled through an ethics committee. We do have an ethics code. The problem is it's sort of a dead end. There's no place to take it when you, when you go there. So we put together this thing, uh, with Steve's help of researching from other communities. And we found out that, um, we could probably, we could probably do a couple of things. Number one, we could educate our elected officials and our appointed officials that are appointed to committees and, and commissions and things of that nature. Um, by having a committee that would be able to, they could go to and say, I want to do this, this and this, but I, do I have a conflict here or do I have a conflict there? And they could go and get a ruling from them. And that ruling would be held confidential so that they didn't have to, so that they didn't have to expose what they were doing. And that's, that's one of the things we wanted to do here. You know, on most of the agendas for city committees and commissions now, you'll see an item on there that gives the, uh, participants a chance to say whether or not they've got a, uh, conflict of interest. The truth of the matter is they don't really know. And in some cases, they've gone again, they've gone out on something that would have been a very big conflict of interest without even knowing that they were doing it. We need to work on that. This thing, uh, when you read through it, they're going to find a couple of things. One is it is incredibly detailed as to the process for, for getting an advisory opinion and as to filing a charge and who can file a charge and where they can file it. Any citizen can file a charge for an ethics violation. But the committee will always, or the board will always determine whether or not there is probable cause before they start a, an investigation. They'll do a preliminary review to find out if there is. So that'll, that'll short circuit a lot of things that are just grudges between one person and another. The other thing that'll happen is if it does end up in a trial-type arrangement, um, and this worried Hap a lot, uh, when we were drafting the thing. Um, there, he's, it is so detailed. It is absolutely detailed. And he was afraid that we would end up with a lot of process lawsuits. People saying, well, the, your, your committee violated the process and this sort of thing. What we hoped to do was make it a cookbook so that the citizens who sat on it, the laypersons who sat on this committee, uh, would not be, uh, would not be lacking instruction on what's the next step. They would know what to do. Um, that's one, one of the reasons we, we did this in that level of detail so that they, they could get it. Right now, I don't think it's a lot different than what happens with the Fire and Police Commission. The Fire and Police Commission could quite possibly generate, uh, lawsuits, uh, from, from their decisions. And then, uh, the thing is with their lawsuits, they end up, they, you know, specifically go to Circuit Court and that's the end of it. This obviously doesn't. The citizens of, the, the citizens that we put on it would be nominated by the common council and voted on secretly. So that, uh, there would be people who had no interest or no, uh, no loyal, no loyalties as such to any particular politician. Because at some point in time, it could happen that they could be charged and brought before this ethics committee itself. There were a lot of obje- there were a lot of objections to the ordinance originally. It was, it was too, it was too detailed, too complicated, but a lot of cities use the same thing quite successfully. Uh, and one city that, that tried to get around it a little bit, they just say that it'll follow the course of criminal procedure, the criminal procedures for a trial. Um, but that's the same thing. They just don't say, they just don't lay it out in, in that. Um, we also decided to change this and then work with, uh, uh, a method for onboarding members of the committee, training them so that they know what's expected of them and how they work. And, uh, we think that it would probably, it would probably save the city some legal expenses if things were handled through this board as opposed to one side getting a lawyer and the other side getting a lawyer and see you in court, that sort of thing. The, there is, I, I, I think there's more to it than that, though. I think there's more to it than the mechanics. And the mechanics are, it says that, well, we as aldermen are responsible for just about everything that goes on in this city, one way or another. Ultimately, we're the policymaking board and it all comes back to us. We're not, we're not some elites that are appointed to oversee us. We're not like gods. Um, we are public servants. And as the public servants, we have a responsibility not only to safeguard the city's money, the, the taxpayer's money, which we just spent about two hours doing earlier, but we also have to safeguard the integrity of the institution. And that is, we have to prove to the citizens that we are holding ourselves and those who work with us accountable. And that we have to show that there is a clear and transparent way of dealing with it. And that's why we need this thing. It's our duty to vest ourselves with the tools to protect the integrity of the entire city. And that's the most important thing we can do. I'd like, I ask you to take a look at this ordinance. Um, I know we're not voting on it tonight. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on it either now or, um, uh, later on. Uh, if you need to call me, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Um, I think it's a good ordinance. I think it's something we need to do. And I think it's something that we need to accomplish in order to restore, restore the integrity of the city. And I say that because, you know, it was only two weeks ago. Somebody stood up at that podium over there and basically called us a bunch, called us a corrupt council. They called some of their, our, uh, they called some of our city officials corrupt by name. We need to end that. And I think we need, and we can end it by showing them we're serious about this thing. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you've got. Um, Haps here, I'm sure he'll, he'll expound on it too. So, uh, I thank you for your time.
Questions for Mr. Wagner? Mr. Bargender?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, how many ti- I, I don't know if Ed can answer this or HR or whatever, but how many times in the past 10 years have, have there been alleged ethics violations by elected or appointed city officials in the city?
I can personally say I have known of three. And that's been in the past 10 years, yeah, 10 years easily.
And, and how were they resolved?
Uh, they were resolved when the DA decided he didn't want to pay, like, place charges.
So they were never really resolved?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Sparrows?
I just had a couple, I went through a couple of the things and I did, uh, talk to Hap.
I just had a couple, I went through a couple of the things, and I did talk to Hap a little bit about a couple of things. I think you remember the last meeting. I had wished that Hap had been here so he could kind of give his perspective on some of the questions. One of the things that I wanted to go over was requiring members to provide any potential conflict of interest. The line in there, how extensive does that get? Hap?
Jen's going to answer that question.
Jen, I'm sorry, I needed, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I can give you a brief scenario. So one of the things that we've done since this was going to go into place is I drafted a base-level disclosure form. And what that talks about is really more of a financial obligation. The threshold was a $5,000 benefit, where that would look for 5%, I believe, of the total cost. And so, in looking at that, it was really a conflict of interest in terms of, do you have a financial gain? Do you have a family member who has a financial gain? Are you involved in the board of a committee, one of those types of things? You would answer those questions. Those, and again, it's not gone through Hap yet, so he might have some feedback on it as well as Ed. But ultimately, it'd be a very clear kind of yes-or-no question. And then that would be filed with Human Resources for all of the elected officials and appointed officials, as well as all employees within the city.
Okay. So in follow-up, if I may? So I was guessing, I was a little confused by that. I thought that it was going to, I thought it was a requirement of the members of the committee, that they do that. So I guess my question is, is they would maybe disclose their conflict of interest at the beginning. But say, in a year, there's another case that presents that would be a conflict of interest at that point in time. Then what do you do, because you only have a committee of three people?
Sure. And Hap might be able to answer that. From the stance of the disclosure form, that is a form that would be updated annually. And there's also a clause in there that would say, I believe it said, within 60 days of a change where you become a part of a board or committee, or that you would have a conflict of interest, but there is a need to notify at that point. But again, it's pretty rough right now.
So, and I'm not sure if you're asking in terms of this general provision that basically what this is saying, the clause that you triggered, or asking questions about, are a requirement within that ordinance that would require anybody who is in a position of a public official to disclose that type of information. It's not specific to this body that would be the Ethics Board. Now, what I'm hearing you ask is, what if somebody's on that board and would have that? You know, I've just discussed this in the past. I mean, obviously, these things can be a moving target, right? Today, you may have no conflict of interest. Tomorrow, you could, and it could be in many different forms. The way that's typically treated under the law is that we have a rule that says, "You can't do things if you have a conflict of interest." We are basically self-regulating in that sense. And so what would happen in that situation is it would be incumbent on the person that has that conflict of interest to arise to disclose it. If they don't, and you're on this body, you're just as liable for it as anybody else would be in any other position. I just don't think there's any way to deal with, you know, what we have in terms of that provision, it's unique, because we basically are looking at this and trying to gain this information proactively. In theory, it shouldn't matter, because as soon as somebody fills out a form and realizes that that's there, or gets that information, they're not going to be on that body any longer. But if it changes in between, we're still left with everybody trying to do their best in terms of disclosing that, and not being in a position either on the body or making decisions that would be conflict of interest.
Right. I was just concerned, because the board is so small. And, you know, I could see, because it is a moving target, you know, one member claiming a conflict of interest and having to recuse themselves from a certain, whatever you want to call it, you know, a problem that's presented, then you're down to only two members deciding. And I didn't know if there was a plan, a backup plan, if there was an alternate plan for the committee. It didn't look like it in the document, so I was curious about that. And then I just kind of wanted to know, does the benefit of creating or having this body outweigh the potential cost and benefit? Because it looks like at some point, you know, I just can see a lot of, it seems there's a lot of legal stuff in here. And I, again, I just caution that normal citizens that don't have any background in the law, I don't know that they could always go through these muddy waters without legal counsel being brought in to help them steer that through. Do you see that as a potential?
So, I mean, first of all, you guys have dealt with me long enough that you know I'm not going to touch at all over whether or not the benefit's going to outweigh by the cost. I, I mean, I have advised when this first came up that that's a decision, that's a policy decision. And, you know, the one thing that you're taking on by this is, of course, some complexity. So one way for me to address that is, what would happen today? I can tell you, first of all, I've been in a position as legal counsel here for a long time. And even though I typically didn't go to these meetings for many, many years, we used other personnel in my staff to do that. Any of those conflict of interest issues typically came to me, though, for evaluation. So I will tell you that I have written dozens of opinions over the years about various issues that may or may not be conflicts of interest. The statute provides for this type of Ethics Board to stand in a position to sort of give a confidential opinion to somebody that would be a public official looking for input along those lines. And the same statute says that the other option is, if there is no board, that they go to the city attorney. So I've gotten a number of those over the years. You know, at times, what happens with those is that they're coming up either because somebody's raising that question, and I'm weighing in on it, or in the alternative, because somebody feels like, you know, they're making a decision, and they want to know, do they have a conflict of interest? So it comes into that play. These things can be complex, though, in terms of understanding how our rules fit. And, you know, the average person may struggle in terms of doing that. Obviously, the ordinance provides for support of legal counsel to assist in making those decisions. So to whatever extent that, you know, legal advice is needed to come to some of those conclusions, you know, that would be a role that I'd be playing anyway. As far as, you know, the real issue to me is that you are talking about, and this body has been dealing with this a little bit recently, certainly within this year. And that is, this does set out a very formalized procedure to deal with allegations of a conflict of interest. And so there isn't any doubt, if you look at that, that there could be potential costs associated with that. Whether that's outweighed by the benefit, one of the things that Alderman Wagner mentioned is that, you know, just simply the confidence that people may get from that. The decision of whether or not the confidence in the public in general is enough to outweigh the cost of having trial or multiple trials, that's up to this body to make, without any comment on my behalf. Could it be expensive? You know, I've been involved in these, and Mr. Wagner, I think, used the reference to the PFC process, because I had suggested that to him at one point, that the procedure generally is very similar to a PFC disciplinary procedure. And, you know, it is a formalized thing that has deadlines, due process requirements. And as you can look at this ordinance, you can see that there's basically a trial. And that's something that we don't often see in this type of municipal setting, except for, you know, some very specific circumstances. Are you better off with that or not? That's a tough call.
And just one more, if I may, in follow-up. I do think it's really, I like the idea of this, I really do. And I think it's, for transparency in government, it's really essential. But because of what you said, you know, with the, it is very similar to the Police and Fire Commission's procedure, and just things that we ourselves have gone through in the last few months, especially the Finance, Budget, Personnel Committee, and what we went through. It is very complicated. And I know that I spent time on the phone trying to figure out what was going on. And I mean, I sought your advice. And I, you know, and I understand that, you know, that that's the only thing that I worry about is that, you know, that it gets to be an overwhelming-looking thing. And I just worry about, does that scare people off from being on our boards, commissions? And does it scare people off from wanting to be a member of this particular Ethics Board? Because it's just scary-looking. It's so legal-looking.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Spears brought up a very interesting thing, that she talked about one of the recent experiences we had on Finance, Budget, and Personnel, where we essentially had to sit in basically the same situation. In that case, what made it so, what made that so scary was, there weren't any rules. There weren't any precedents for us to follow. It was just freelance. And basically, the whole idea here is to give, like I said, I called it a cookbook. Yeah, it pretty much is. This is what you do with it. The other thing, I happen to know that there are people who would like to serve on this committee. I had a letter from a gentleman here in town who said that he heard about this, and he would very much love to volunteer his time to be on it. I do know some people personally who would have the, well, actually, a couple of them that would have legal experience that would like to do this. I think, I think this opens up a whole new area for us in being able to train the people that we have serving on boards and commissions as to what exactly constitutes a conflict of interest, and teaches them how to avoid it. How to avoid it. If we can save ourselves one court case a year, we're making a huge profit. So that's the way I figure, that's the way I feel about this. And I think, again, you got two weeks to look over this and think about it. And, you know, and we'll, as they say down south, we'll cuss and discuss this later. So, but we'll see how it goes.
Mr. Bargender.
Thank you, Mayor. Rebecca alluded to this a little earlier, only having two members of the citizenry on the board. I believe that there should be also a third person considered as an alternate. And that the person that's accused of ethics violations should have the ability to disqualify one of the members at any time, for any reason. That's very similar to what we do, or what I chaired the board to review here in the city of Marshfield. And that's very similar to that type of way of doing things there, that the appellant could disqualify one of the board members. So I would really, really like to see that in there, that we have a person that would be an alternate. Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Butky?
Yeah, I'm the one that proposed that, this committee. But listening to this, I think we got to be very careful. I know the mayors over the past have had difficult times getting citizen members on these committees. And we have to educate them, and I hope this doesn't scare them off. That's the only thing I'm worried about.
Anyone else? A member for, or? Any other councilwoman? I keep thinking I see a hand somewhere. Sure. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Jenny Gerstley. I helped Hap, Ed, Jen, and Steve draft this ordinance. And as Ed said, I have 15 years' public service experience, working in Human Resources, and specifically doing ethics investigations of state and public officials. So that's why I volunteered my services for this. To address some of the concerns I heard about this potentially being a deterrent to getting individuals in our community to serve on, either in an elected position or in an appointed position, one thing I just wanted to add is that the creation of this ordinance doesn't change the city's existing code of ethic. So the city has an existing code of ethics. It's had an existing code of ethics for many years. And all of the appointees and elected officials on our boards and commissions and council already have to adhere to that code of ethic. So all this ordinance does is it gives the city a mechanism by which they can investigate and, you know, come to a conclusion or make a determination on any complaints of violation of that code of ethic, which is something that the city lacked in the past. So I just wanted to add that, because it seemed like there was some confusion about that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Wagner.
Just one last thing. As scary as this thing looks, whatever this board does ends up here with a recommendation. And it's the council that makes the final decision.
All right. Seeing nothing further, then, we will go on to item O. A request for the extension of a conditional use permit, resolution number 2019-02, by Prairie Lodging for a large development hotel located at 400 West Upham Street, presented by Josh Miller, Director of Development Services.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an interesting year. We've had a few of these extensions with the conditional use. And I think some, some in part due to the COVID pandemic, things have had a hard time getting going and moving forward. In this case, the applicant, Prairie Lodging, who's the owner of the Hampton Inn, they had gotten, they had their groundbreaking back in November, a year ago, and had every intention to be done within a year, which would have fulfilled the obligation of the conditional use permit. We require to have the conditional use permit start within 365 days and be operational within 730 days, unless there's some extension granted as part of the approval. In this case, they've had an issue with being able to get their elevator in place. And in order for them to have a certificate of occupancy, they have to have that elevator to be able to furnish all their rooms and get those all finished. So their occupancy should be, supposed to be done by January 21st of 2021. That's looking unlikely. I guess it's still possible, but based on the ordering, and they feel like it's going to be a challenge to get that done in time. So they're really asking for a six-month extension. It is a little bit awkward, though, for having to get a six-month extension when they're already about 90% done with their hotel. So the alternative would be, if they couldn't get an extension, they'd have to reapply for a conditional use. But the code does provide for this exception, or basically, extension by the common council with clause. So with that, the developer is asking for a six-month extension to get their certificate of occupancy.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the extension? A motion by Mr. Butky, seconded by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, then roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Rosenthal?
Yes.
Bargender?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spears?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P, overview of 2020 employee benefits, introduced by Jen Requieu, Human Resource Director.
Thank you. What we wanted to do this year is something a little bit different than what we've brought into you in past years. Usually, at this meeting, we have M3 come forward, and they talk about our health plan, and they talk about the renewal and how all of that worked. And we're still going to cover that tonight. But what I wanted to do instead is provide a bit of an update in regard to our benefit strategy, and allow the entire council to get a good look at our full benefits package and the renewals that we do this year. Now, not every benefit. We're not talking about our retirement plans and those types of things, but all of our annual enrollment types of benefits. So certainly, we'll be open to questions. But we've got John Price from M3 here. He's going to go through the information with you. And then again, we'll be happy to take any questions.
I don't know if we have, yeah. And this arrow, right? Good evening, everyone. So it's not advancing, but. There we go. Yeah, I think I got it this time. So as Jen mentioned, what we want to do is kind of cover an overview. We really want to do that over an extended period of time. But I think just talking about the last few years, over the last few years, I think there's been great progress made in working with us. The Human Resources Department here in particular, along with the Insurance Committee, has made some great strides across all employee groups while maintaining a competitive boss and elective, you know, good selection of benefits. Keeping benefits strong and providing a good menu while managing cost. Some examples of that would be the high-deductible health plan in conjunction with the HSA. And, you know, a lot of familiar faces here. Over the years, we've been talking about the Health Savings Account, and we have succeeded in, you know, finally getting rid of the, or eliminating the traditional plan, I should say. I thought that was, that was good, a good thing to do. It was, you know, something that- It was, you know, something that hadn't been done easily. You know, it did, it did require a couple of years, but it was, it was worth it. The city also implemented a health plan design change to minimize cost increases. They implemented dental plan design changes to reduce costs while keeping a very competitive dental plan. They implemented a new long-term disability plan, which expanded coverage and reduced cost. And the city has also implemented multiple e-clinic devices, which many of you know about, in several city facilities, helping to reduce annual healthcare costs for city employees while reducing time away from work. So these initiatives, I think, are worth celebrating by the city. It is the city employees, the Insurance Committee, the Human Resources Department that has really led on these items. We've worked with them closely on a lot of them, but I can tell you that the effort, the efforts are paying off, and you'll see that in our discussion. In terms of this year's renewal, what we're seeing is, we looked at the renewal in comparison to three other HMOs and six other insurance companies. And what we found was that security health plan had a pooling point that was appropriate. People don't always know what a pooling point is, right? So just to put it in layperson's terms, if a claim goes over $100,000, it's taken out of the exhibit. And the average is 100, yours is 120, so it was a little bit high, but it's still working effectively. Our underwriter also noticed that security health plan's medical trend was lower than what was averaged. Recalculating the renewal resulted in nine other insurance companies producing a renewal of 4.7%. Security's health plan for the initial offer this year was a 5.45. Final negotiation, if you were to change nothing, resulted in a 3.45% renewal. So lower than the average and in part the result of us looking at these other nine companies, which is good. The renewal both, the renewal produces a reasonable 3.45%, but it actually drops down to a minus 8.91% potentially if employees were to select a new option. So we're going to talk a little bit more about that new option just ahead. But if you were to make no changes to the plan, it would be a plus 3.45. So the result is offering this plan alongside of your current plan. You have a current high deductible health plan that has a very broad network, includes providers like Ascension, Aspiris, and Marshfield Clinic, but many employees don't use those providers. The vast majority, over 95% of employees, are using Marshfield Clinic. So it made sense to offer a network that featured Marshfield Clinic exclusively, just about exclusively. It has mental health providers, behavioral health, that has chiropractors and other providers in the network. But rather than having the full broad spectrum of providers, offering a plan like that alongside of your current plan could result in a, you know, a decrease in your premium. So it makes sense to do that. The concern was, what about dependents? Well, dependents living outside the service area will be covered as if they're in-network, regardless of location, but we don't have to worry about that if an employee chooses it. And just a reminder, this is offered alongside of your current plan. So you might have an employee that says, I'm not interested in going just to Marshfield. That's too narrow for me. That's too limited. So they don't, they don't have to do that. If the city goes this route and, you know, it looks like you are going this route, if 25% of employees chose that narrow network, I'll simply one, you'd have less than a 1% overall increase. If 50% of employees do it, you'll have a 2.67% decrease. If 75% of employees do it, you'll have a minus 8.91% decrease. So if you look at the actual plan design that you, that you have in place, this is a copy of your current plan, the $3,000 single deductible, $6,000 family deductible, 90% coverage thereafter, I won't go through the whole thing. But the only difference between this plan and the narrow network plan is the network. So when you look at these two plan designs, they're identical plan designs, it's just which providers that you can go to. So having employees knowing that 95% of them are using Marshfield Clinic, it would make sense that many of them would opt for a plan that's lower in cost. So just putting that in context with, you know, we started out by talking a little bit about your strategy over the last few years, offering a community network featuring simply one, which has Marshfield Clinic as its only multi-specialty clinic in the network, will decrease overall costs for the city and for employees. The goal would be to continue to monitor utilization and network spend, expand the city's healthcare committee for employee feedback, provide valuable input on both plans, and continue to partner with local providers to improve the healthcare population and better manage healthcare costs, as you have done, as we noted earlier. Things like the onsite telehealth or the e-clinic, Care My Way and the nurse line along with Marshall Clinic's specialty pharmacy program have resulted in, you know, a favorable renewal, but let's keep that going, is really the thought process. If you look at the two plans, you can see what the rates are. The total premium is 849.32 for a single, 1,959 for a family. 2021, what we're calling base rates for simply one, that plan would be the narrow network plan. If employees choose that, you can see their contribution goes down from 127.40, 111.82, and from $293.98 to $259.04. The city contribution also goes down. It saves, it saves both city employees as well as the city itself, and I think it's favorable. As we look at the overview, you know, not to ignore dental, you're currently with Delta Dental, you've been with Delta Dental for a very long time. Dental plan utilization has remained stable from 2016 to 2020, with loss ratios ranging from 82.4 to 89.9%. Dental plan premiums, there's no changes to the plan design or cost. Plan design changes were from 2016 to 2018. Plan design changes were made in 2019, and dental plan premiums are flat for 2019 and 2020. So there's no change in plan and no increase for 2021 on the dental plan. The strategy was really about benefit alignment. In 2018, the goal was to reduce the annual maximum to better match plan utilization. Less than 5% of employees were hitting the annual max, and you're paying for a benefit that employees weren't using, so that was done. In 2019 and 2020, it was about monitoring utilization to ensure decreased annual maximum, you know, still met employees' needs, and it did. 2021, extending in 85.15 costs shared to all non-represented employee groups. And then for 2022 and 2023, monitor enrollment adjustments and costs to evaluate the potential benefits of moving to a self-insured model for dental. The school district here in town has a self-funded dental plan. Many employers offer a self-funded dental plan, so it's a direction that makes sense to go in, and there's not a great deal of risk, because unlike medical, dental is, you know, very predictable. Your current dental plan is comprehensive, it's in keeping with what we see in the market or better. Your renewal, as you can see on this page, has a no increase on the dental plan. I'm not getting into a lot of details in the interest of time, but, you know, we'll open it up for questions, we can spend time on any area that you'd like to. In terms of the vision plan, your vendor is National Vision Administrators. There's been no plan design changes or cost increases since 2014. They did call for a 3% increase this year, resulted in a 9-cent increase for single and 31-cent increase for family. We felt it was fair and reasonable, but nonetheless, intent is to, you know, take it out to bid and look at another vision plan, at least for comparison purposes for next year. Again, the vision plan is comprehensive in comparison to what we see in the market. It's very reasonably priced. The employee cost is very minimal, 45 cents for a 30-hour work week or a $1.61. In terms of other benefits, long-term disability, as we mentioned earlier, moved from Lincoln Financial to Unum, and that was put in place for 2020. There's no changes for 2021. Flexible spending accounts is administered by Employee Benefits Corporation. You get dependent care only on that. So what's the summary? In summary, the city's current benefit package is competitive with the external market. You know, it's a good benefit package. It is something that I think the efforts on the part of the Insurance Committee and the city itself is paying off in keeping benefits strong on health, dental, vision, and LTD. Renewals for 2021 are fair or within or below expected ranges. Plan monitoring assessment's going to continue and continue to work with that Insurance Committee. The need to conduct requests for proposals and still continue, obviously shop, is a part of the plan, especially because you're running better. You know, you're doing better, and I think what can happen is, in those years when you start to continue to improve, you know, you can, you can go out to bid and get good results. So it's just something that'll continue to happen. And then a very important topic, which we mentioned earlier, is benefit alignment. You know, benefit alignment has taken place in all of these areas, but the area that's left on that is the PEP program for 2021. Are there any questions?
Questions from the council? Nope. Doesn't look like there are.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Item Q, request to approve the city's contribution towards employee HSA accounts for 2021, presented by Jen Requieu, Human Resources Director.
Thank you. So this will be a bit of a quick topic. So every year, since we've put the HSA in place, we've been providing our employees with a contribution towards the health savings account due to the fact that we have a high deductible health plan. And so every year, what we've provided is a $600 per year contribution for a single plan, $1,200 for a family plan. What we're requesting is that we continue that process going forward to help our employees with these costs for healthcare. Certainly happy to take any questions, otherwise staff would recommend approval of the current adjustments or current contributions to those plans for 2021.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the HSA contribution? Motion by Mr. Budke is your second. Second by Mr. Peschall. Any discussion? Mr. Budke?
Jen, I assume that this HSA is not use it or lose it. We've gotten away from that, which has helped us a lot. Is that true?
It is. So the HSA, when the money goes into the employee's account, they can, they get the city's contribution, and they can also have money taken out pre-tax dollar out of their paychecks and put into the account, can be used for medical, dental, or vision expenses, and it is their money from day one.
Any further, Mr. Wagner?
Yes. I don't see the total cost to the city on this. Can you tell me what that is?
Sure. Total cost is about $170,000 a year for this contribution.
Oh, that's all. Thank you very much.
Further questions from the council? There is. Nope, seeing no further questions, please roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Pageal?
Yes.
Rosenthal?
Yes.
Bargender?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spiros?
No.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
No.
Thank you. That motion carries seven to three.
Thank you.
Item R, presentation review of proposed communications plan, presented by Tom Lox, Communication Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a map up here that you can refer to while I go over the plan. And just to let you know, this plan has been vetted several times, many times, by city staff, by Communications Committee, by myself, by my coworker, David, in the back, by Steve Barg, by Tom Budke, you name it. And we've given some great thought about it. So please ask any questions after this. And again, this is the first up at this, and there's just, there's, we're not looking for a recommended action tonight, and that would be at our next council meeting, if so be. So I got to want to turn to the strategic plan. We need to look back at our strategic plan. It's really important that we do that often, and if we don't do that, we're not really fulfilling our mission of a lot of our departments. So we're in that strategic plan, Communications. And when I say "we," I say the city as a whole. I don't look at Communications Department being just its own department. Communications is everybody here. It's the council. It's people out here. It's all the departments, all the workers. That's how we communicate. And if we don't work as a team, which you'll hear me really talk about teamwork, Communications will fail. And, and you hear it and see it a lot. And I'm here to help make that process smoother. Can I fix all of it? No. But it does take teamwork. So with that said, I just wanted to say that we need to make sure that we're going again by our strategic plan. We are behind a bit. When that was implemented, again, that was implemented before we had a Communications Department that was, but a lot of those pieces in that strategic plan are very valid today. So let's take a look at this map and what is this map all about? And I don't want to get real into the weeds, as Steve would say, into the weeds. I learned that from you, Steve. What is effective communication? How do you reach audiences? Well, that's what we need to be doing, both internally and externally. If we don't have good communications between all of us with the council, right there, we've got some problems. So I drew, we put a map together to really kind of help the process smoother and easier to see. You could use this map in many areas. It doesn't even have to really be used in communication. It's a, it's a process map that helps get things done, really, is what it is. And that's the way I look at it. But I try to make it easy, easy to understand, easy for staff to understand, because if I talk, look back to why I say Communications is more than our Communications Department, you'll see this in this plan and why that is. We're, we're not a department that works by ourselves. We, we can only survive and really make good communication efforts out to our citizens, out to our coworkers if we get input by our staff and our leaders. If we don't get it, then we just become trying to find it, being just like your average reporter. We don't want, we don't need to be that reporter. We're internal, and we need to use that effectively. So let's just kind of get into why this is important. Let's talk about the project real quick in this plan that I have, and I don't want to spend too much time. I'll go down seven steps, and you can kind of see how it flows through here. What I mean by the project, it's not the communications projects, it's the actual project that we're doing. So if we're going to talk about a street project that's going to happen in 2023, isn't there communications that have to start then? That's what we need to be doing. And in order to have that happen, we need to get involved, the Communications Department as well as other department heads, as well as maybe even the public. So look at the map and how it flows through. And what I did is I put two pieces in here. Staff, how does Communications internally work with staff, and how does Communications work to get out to our residents, our citizens, our business owners, those kind of people? So I try to hit two birds with one stone here, if you follow the map. There's two different directions. One, does it affect staff? Okay, where does it go? You can see where it goes, and it answers that question. There's another piece that goes, yes, does the project affect the public? Well, if it's no, it's still a project, but it's still handled by the department in itself, and that's fine. Let the department head, let the departments work that out, project's finished. There's, maybe it's just something internally that has to be done. It's not a, say, communication that has to get out to the public or to other coworkers. They could use this plan within their own departments. But anyway, you can see how I did this. The project is in blue. Again, does the project affect the department, city staff, or public? You move into a strategy function that's very important, that's in the yellow area here. This is the bell that clicks and says, wait, we have a Communications Department. Okay, what is the Communications Department there? Well, they're, they're, they're the department that should know what they're doing in this area. They were hired to do that, just no different than anybody that is hired to fix streets or be a police officer. That's their craft. Our craft is giving a message. If it's television, if it's radio, if it's a press release, whatever it is. But first, we need to know that project. We don't know the project, we can't help. We're lost. So just, just keep in mind- It, we can't, and one of the things is council is, is not the place to be telling the public everything. That's where we run into it. These meetings are not our informational source to the public. There's an informational source to you guys, but not to the public. So anyway, I just wanted to go on how strategy is. Again, it's working with depart, it's department and division heads, reach out to the Communications Department, and that's how things start to progress, to use this department to help form the tools needed, the tools, the reach out to where we're going. You can kind of see in here where it goes into a plan. There's always going to be an important plan. We can't just throw darts and expect things to work. The Communications Department and the department's heads, maybe the leads, maybe some staff people, that's when they start working together on a plan. They have to work together. It's not a plan just for communications to do. We need their input. They're the ones that are doing the main project. They know what they have to do. We have to communicate it to the public. That's our job. But we need their help because otherwise, we're going to be kind of like that reporter out there. And how many times have you seen misinformation out by media people? It happens. I was a media guy for 30 years almost in my previous career before I came here. I get that process, and it's a harder process, but we're internal, so it should become easier or inside public relations departments. So anyway, just planning is very important, excuse me. And then you move into, you know, how, again, how do you reach the public? Teamwork, like I explained, and you go on down into execute. That's number four. It's red. Takes a bit of time to execute, but at least you have a plan now where you're going to go. You're not just guessing. That's work that has to be done by, by your Communications Department. Now, again, we're only two people. We understand that. We can't do everything. And we can teach, we can provide instruction, our expertise, to the coworkers. There's a lot of very good people here that can write. We're doing that approach. We're trying to get to that level, but we just, we want to be heard, to provide that information and that guidance and that leadership that we can provide. So, but let us do our work. Let the multimedia work happen. It, it might be a news release. We don't know. We don't know what the project is. The project might affect a certain block of people. You don't know. And you have to look at it differently for everything, and that's our job. Can't see a news release going to work for everything. It won't. You can't. Some people get their information differently. Again, you can't have the same information on all platforms. That has to be done differently, too. Now, how do you expect Josh's department or our, another department like Dan's, to do all that work? They have their work to do for themselves. They have to do the project. That's their main focus. But, and that's why we're here to do the other part. So it's important that we bring the communicators involved in the process, excuse me, at the beginning of the process, which is placed in blue. Let's talk about publishing. That's, it gets a little bit confusing. I've had a few people call me and ask me from reading the packet, which is good. I'm glad people are doing that, that citizens actually call on me. And I didn't want to get too detailed, but again, back to publishing out to the community, we have many platforms to do that. Marshfield Media Access, that's a platform. Are we Marshfield Media Access? Yes, but it's a platform. It's no different than a YouTube platform or another kind of a video platform. Look at it as that. Marshfield Media Access is a way to get information out about the city. Our, our job as the Communications Department of that piece can use Marshfield Media Access as a platform, but we have other platforms that we must use, and we must use new stuff. And if we don't, we're going to be basically in the Stone Age. So when I'm looking at things like texting service, email notifications, things like that, we're not there. We want to get there. We, we need to be there because people consume their information in several different ways. But you don't also want to forget about the people that do consume information more of an analog way. There is a lot of people out here, especially in our community, and we do that. We have our public access channel. A lot of people are watching these meetings via television right now, as we've heard. That's good. We want to continue that. Radio is another area I've heard. People like to get information off that. That's another important piece. How do we use radio? A lot of cities actually have low-power FM stations, but one of the good things we have here is we do have an AM station that does a lot of local news. We're very lucky to have that. A lot of communities don't have very good local news. But anyway, I don't want to get off on a tangent. Just where publishing is, there's many different forms, and that all comes back, again, back to that planning process. Where are we going? This all takes quite a bit of time. It's not done overnight. It's not done in 10 seconds. And how do you get there? How do you get there with two people? Plan. Planning, 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 organization, and deadlines. If you can't follow a deadline or be organized or wait till the last minute, you'll fail. And that's in anything. You'll fail. I'm very serious on that. I come from a deadline-organized person from being on a newspaper. If you were five minutes late, you had an editor jumping down your throat. And that's what it was back in the 80s and 90s. Today, it's a different world. I miss those days. They were a lot of fun, and the pressure actually did really well in that. I, I kind of miss that pressure. Sometimes people do better under pressure than not under pressure. Let's go to number six, the follow-up. And I'm just letting you kind of follow this map, and then I'll go to satisfaction and then let you guys ask any questions. But again, follow-up is so important, and if you don't follow up on where we're going, what has been done, maybe even the satisfaction of a road. Was the road done well? Is it falling apart in two years? You know, we need to provide that kind of communication out, and not only to the residents, but to you, to you guys, so you guys can make great decisions on when you are saying we have, need money to fix a road. We can provide a lot of that information as well. We just need to craft that message clean and easy for you to understand, for the public to understand, for staff to understand. So follow-up, again, can go back and forth quite a bit throughout the whole project. So it never ends. Communication's not just one piece. It never ends with a press release. That's about the least thing, that should be one of the things we, we just do. It's still very valid, but that's not the only thing we can be doing, and I still find us doing that. And I'd hope we'd steer away from that. But it's going to take teamwork. It won't just be me to make that happen. It, it takes team. Satisfaction, again, so important because if the public isn't satisfied with the work that's in, and we're not communicating that out, then we got a problem as well. Again, that's communication and how we handle that. So, I mean, there's a lot of ways that we can make this. But I wanted to put a process map together that helps everybody be able to get to the point, which is the end of the project, which could take years, but at least we're communicating along the way to our residents, our aldermen, our mayor, and within our, our department. And that's really the most important. And this is really, takes place both internally and externally. If, if we need to get a message out about COVID-19 to staff, how should we do that? How is our resident, how is our employees getting it? Is it email? I doubt it. A lot of people hit that word all the time. That doesn't work. So we have to find new ways, and how do you figure that out? Well, a lot of reading, a lot of talking, a lot of constituents. I do a lot of that. I talk to a ton of people out there in the same job that I have within Wisconsin, Minnesota. And we have a new team that we've formatted through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities that we meet at least once a month, and I find that very valuable of, of individuals that are doing the same job I'm doing, and we network. So hopefully, we can do that. Same idea on a, on a staff level, on communications. So you've had this in front of me. I'm not going to read it. I'm not the type to want to read something that you already have. It's kind of dry and boring, but you can actually see that I have teamwork in here, and if we do this stuff, you're going to find a lot of things that we hear day to day, what caused this? We don't have time. All gets fixed with really good communications, and that's why I have this map. But it can't, it won't happen overnight. It takes quite a bit of time. Only really been in this job for a year and a half or so, and new department. Again, I look at this department as a, almost like an HR administration, a way that it's overall, and so similar to IT.
Tom, can we, in the, we take a look at this, and then you're looking for approval of this at the next meeting. Is that correct?
I am. I just want you to understand how this works, how I came about it, so you can make an educated decision and ask me questions along the way.
Okay.
That's what's very going to be important.
All right. Thank you. And if, if you have any questions now, you can, Mr. Budke.
Just a comment, not a question. Being on the Communication Committee, I know it was difficult at the start to, and I'm not criticizing departments, but it was something new for departments to have a communication person to go through. The value to that, and I think it's getting much better, but the value is you have people that were in the news media. They know how to tweak certain things to communicate, and staff gives them the, the details that they need. And that was slow, only because we've never done that before. Staff members always used to handle their own press releases and stuff, and, and I think that's getting better. And I just want to say, I, I think Tom and, what's his, I can't think of his name. David, thank you. Are doing a wonderful job, and it's only going to get better and better. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you for this plan and presenting it, Tom. One thing I just want to highlight is I, I really do appreciate that you brought up many different platforms because I think there are so many different ways to communicate, and I'm really glad you highlighted that because I think as we continue to enter into the 21st century, the things that we think are the best communication tools, though they might be very good to certain groups of people, we need to expand that. So I just want to applaud you for that, and I think that the City of Marshall needs to continue to expand and go, how can we communicate to vastly different people? I mean, I don't get news from the television. I get it from my smartphone. There's just one example. Everyone's different, though. And so how do we get that message out? So I just want to applaud you for that. I think that's great. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? No? All right. Thank you, Tom. Item S, request to approve the appointment of Gabriel Falke, 301 Wisconsin Avenue, to fill a position on the Economic Development Board that was vacated by Lisa Stroman Schutz. This appointment expires in 2022. You have her resume here, and there's no action tonight. Please, Mr. Wagner.
Okay.
You want to say?
I'll be right.
No, not asking for action tonight. It'll be on the next meeting. All right. Seeing nothing further on that, we'll go to item T, adjourned to closed session, under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons are involved. Possible assistance for the proposed development projects. Motion to go into closed session. Motion by Mr. Peschall, second by Mrs. Spearls. Roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Peschall?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Argender?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yeah.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Spearls?
Yep.
Budke?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Thank you. We are in closed session.